I would like to call a meeting to order for four secondary schools. Please rise for the pledge allegiance.
At all religions, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the real life of our wishes stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number clerk, could you please take your roll call? Number Corcoran is absent. Number Morehead here. Number Peterson?
Present.
Number Odegaard?
Here.
Number Tyson? Here. Number Raydill is absent, and number Olson is here. Does anybody have any additions or deletions to today's agenda? Okay, well, the second agenda, that's written. Scheduled and unscheduled visitors, I guess I'll report on that. We had one visitor tonight, down in school eight, from Lee, and we had some next discussion, and that was about it. We didn't have anybody else. Thanks for coming. And then tonight, for student achievement. Oh, absent.
That's why your green card, I apologize.
Oh, no worries.
You guys have been scrambling this. Members of the board, Dr. Masti, thank you. I just wanted to take a quick second. This afternoon, our members voted on two measures. The QCOM plan and the contract for the teachers for the 2017-2019 session. And overwhelmingly, our members voted to approve both the QCOM plan as it stands, as well as the contract proposed for this year. The negotiations team approached this with a lens of, let's address workload and professionalism, really looking, understanding that our financial position in the district is less than ideal. I think that's the best way to put it. And so, we went into it with thoughtful minds and well aware of the financial position. But we also understand that we need to be competitive to retain and recruit our new teachers.
I am honored to represent those teachers. And I think our proposal was reflective of the things we were trying to accomplish. And I would like to thank Dr. Masti, Director Friedman, Director Martini. This was quite possibly one of the most collaborative processes I've been through when it came to negotiations. And I really appreciated the lens everybody brought to the table with creativity and thoughtfulness as we go forward. So I think the overwhelming support of the contract reflected that kind of message that was heard. Additionally, QCOM had the same measure of success in passing. And I think it's also reflective of the space that QCOM provides for just some critical reflection and professional improvement on both an individual level and at the building level. And a huge debt of thanks goes to our coordinator of that, Becky Haven, as well as our coaches. Because I think that's been one of the most beneficial pieces of it, is that time spent in reflection with our coaches and as a part of that plan. So, thank you, as you guys go forward with this. And have it, I believe, on the agenda to vote today. And we just appreciate your support of the teachers in the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to student achievement. We have Julie Greiman, principal from Scandia Elementary IB School. Thank you, Julie.
Well, thank you, Gail, for having us here this evening. I'm just gonna have full disclosure as we get into our presentation tonight here that you kind of got the B-team here tonight. I had another teacher that was all set to be here tonight. And her son plays, Kelly Duncan. And her son plays for Augsburg, who won their Division III. And she's on her way to Illinois to watch her son play in the NCAA Division III March Madness. She said, "Well, I could stay, Julie, but..." I said, "Well, what time will you get into Illinois then?" "Well, about 3:00 in the morning." "No, no, I can do this." And I brought Lynn Fernstall here. She's one of the peer coaches. And she happened to be in Scandia this last scheduled time. And so, she was in the room here when Kelly was doing what's called breakout boxes. And so, we're gonna talk to you tonight about the breakout boxes and what they are. And this is really, it is a new initiative, I guess. It's not quite the right word. But it's a new tool that Kelly has... She did some research on this, and she brought it to Scandia. And she's trying it out in her classroom first. And then, we're gonna go forward with it from there. But I'll give you a little background here of it. It is really, and nowadays with kids, one of the best ways to hook them is with a game format. Have any of you done any of the escape rooms in the cities? Or heard about escape rooms? Well, this is along the lines of this. But it's a game platform that kids can, using the clues that the teachers set up. And it can be for any type of academic area. The teacher kind of sets up some clues. But then, the kids have to work together to get to the, to be able to break out and get into these boxes. And we'll show you a little bit more about that. So, it's for all ages, all different content areas. We have enough, like I said, Kelly was kind of the spearheaded person behind this. We have enough to use it in all of our grade levels. You gotta start small and have one grade level work on it. So Kelly got it started here. And I'm gonna play just a real quick little video here that will kind of talk a little bit about it here.
For decades, students have been trapped in rows taking notes and memorizing facts that have left too many learners disinterested and ill-prepared for the world of tomorrow. It's time to provide students with engaging academic experiences that equip them with content knowledge while cultivating the skills they need to succeed. Enter Breakout EDU, the immersive learning games platform that empowers teachers to facilitate academic games. Players use teamwork and critical thinking to solve a series of challenging puzzles, all with one mission in mind: to open the locked box. Each Breakout EDU kit comes with a unique collection of resettable locks, boxes, and other items that can be used to play hundreds of academic games in a wide variety of subject areas. Breakout EDU also includes an online game builder that allows you to create and share custom games. It's time for something different. Transform your classroom with a Breakout EDU kit. Get started today at breakoutedu.com.
So you can see here, when the kids got started, they had their clues, what they needed to work on. The first time she tried it, she divided the kids into two different teams. And then, they got their clues that they were going to be working on. And Lynn was actually there on the day they did it. I was in a meeting, I couldn't get there. But, so Lynn will talk to you about it a little bit more. But the kids got started with it. The thing that hooked Kelly, and I know if Kelly was here, because she was talking about it afterwards with me, is that we always talk about kids being able to be creative thinkers, that they need to collaborate, that they need to be good communicators. And those are all the things that are part of our IB curriculum. We have what's called the learner profile, which is really the backbone of the curriculum. And it wants kids to be creative thinkers. It wants them to be open-minded. They gotta be risk-takers. They gotta be able to communicate. And this just fits right into what we are talking about all the time in our IB curriculum. So you can see here, some of the kids working on it. And they, I brought two of the boxes. They sit there, and Lynn will tell you a little bit more about it. But Kelly said some of the kids got to the point where they were just trying every little thing they could and not going back to the clues. But what was interesting is that some of the kids that you might think this might be difficult for, they really enjoyed this. And it kind of, it was a whole nother avenue of their brain to be working with that. And it was okay to fail. You know, we have kids sometimes, they are afraid to take a risk. They're afraid to stick their neck out. "I don't know if I should raise my hand, because if I have the wrong answer." And we really try hard not to have the kids be that way, to go ahead and try and work hard. And it's okay if you make a mistake. We're all growing on this together. And it really fits in with our... We talked to a lot of the kids at Scandia about hanging in there, having grit. You don't have it yet. And that's a real powerful mindset that we want to instill in our kids. We got these through Tefla. Kelly wrote the grant. And we've got eight of them there in our building. So we hope our goal is to have one at every grade. And like I said, it's great. You can even have... She had two of the boxes in her room that day. She could've had more, made the teams even smaller. But to get started, that's what she wanted to do. And here, you can see more out there as they find some of the clues. And they get to where they can finally break the box open here. So, we're gonna hear from the kids here what they said after they got done with their first experience.
Hi.
Oh, don't do that.
This is...
No, come on.
Breakout box.
Pause it for a second.
Yeah. I was saying, it was working just fine.
There are lots of locks to find the combination to.
Well, we'll just go, we'll maybe, if we have time, we'll maybe go back to it. But here's, when they get all done, the other piece of it, when the kids got finished, is they go through and have a lot of discussion, reflection time. Kelly brought them up there. You know, I like some of the questions there. "What did you learn about yourself from playing the game?" "You know, what might you do differently next time?" So it's a really good time for them to really be able to reflect on their work and what they did during that time together. And here, they got all excited. They were able to break out. They were able to get it at the very end there. And the kids are pretty excited. Of course, they want to do it again. So, Lynn, did you want to now talk just a little bit here about what you observed?
Oh, well, I came in to the room because I was a peer coach. And Kelly was doing this for the first time. And she really asked, "Oh, Lynn, if you'd just come in with another set of eyes, we can see what works, what doesn't, what needs to be tweaked." And so, I had the opportunity to go in. And it was fascinating. Kelly really talked about them in her room first, about that attempt to, "What if we fail? What are we gonna do?" And that's learning, that's okay. But the main focus, from her point of view, was communication, cooperation, and collaboration. She said, "If you fail, that's all right. Those three things, that's what we're going to work on today." So she really hoped they would not fail. And they didn't, but it was kind of close. And luckily, she moved them into a separate room. So she had her breakout boxes set up on the floor. She had debris from the story that they had read. But to get from her classroom to the breakout room was a little more difficult. There truly was jumping up and down. The kids just couldn't wait to get there. Fun to watch. So they had read the story, The Wild Robot. If you haven't read that book, fascinating, wonderful book. Everyone should read that one. So all of her clues were from that book. And they had to solve that, through that story. When they made it into the breakout room, there was debris along the floor, along with the breakout boxes. So, as with The Wild Robot, The Wild Robot was on a ship, and the ship sank. And all of the robots that were in crates moved onto this deserted island. And there was debris everywhere. And all of the robots were crushed and smashed, except this one wild robot. So, of course, the kids went immediately to the breakout boxes. And they really thought, "No, we're just gonna go through the locks and figure them out." But when they couldn't do that, then they had to come back to the clues and figure those out. Clues are pretty difficult. If you saw where there were just little pieces of words, there were cards. They really had to hold up different pieces of a card, hold it up to the light, and then it would make... Yeah, on the right-hand side. Then it would make a word that would help them solve the puzzle to one of the locks. On the left-hand side, on these cards, they were all related to The Wild Robot, but they all had numbers on them. And they had to figure out how they went in order. So it wasn't a quick look, and we solved our puzzle. It was pretty difficult. There was, if you look to just on this right-hand side, there's the robot's arm. And the other white pieces are the backside of the robot. And what they needed to do, they put it together. They figured out it was a puzzle that made the robot. And they were kind of stuck. So they could ask for a hint only if the whole team went together and asked for a hint. So when they did, they figured out that on the back of that robot puzzle was an infrared clue. It was different math problems. And then, she had a different... She had put sentences together. There was something, there were two different ones. So once, they were able to solve the lock that would undo the small breakout box, then they were able to get the flashlight that would help them to get into the bigger boxes. So at the end, it was timed. And that was a part that we really discussed, was that helpful? Did it make them more anxious? And we'll kind of have to play with that for a little bit. But that pushed different ones to get going. But she talked about your group, and you have to work together. And I did see, there were a couple of kids in each group that said, "Group meeting, group meeting, group meeting. We have to meet, we have to meet." And then they would talk about it. And they were so excited. That took a lot to get that group of third graders to talk. And, "All right, what are we gonna do? What do we think we have to do?" On another of the puzzles, they really had to sit, read, and figure things out. It just wasn't a simple thing. And then the padlocks, one of the padlocks makes a word. So they had to solve the puzzle, figure out what the word was, and then unlock the lock that way. Another one was directions. So they had to follow a map, find each piece on the grid, and then decide which direction they had moved. That was how they unlocked the next padlock. So once they did that, it was amazing what they got. And at the end, I thought was the very best. I just hung around after she gathered them all together. And she really gave them time to reflect on their own and figure out, "All right, what worked, what didn't work." And the kids, you know, if you ask them, they're very honest. And they said, "We didn't listen to our neighbors." You know, someone had a good idea, and we didn't. We didn't read. For one, they had a QR code, they had to scan. And the clue was at the very end of what they had to read. And that took them a few times to figure that out. They just really didn't want to go and figure that all thing out. They just wanted it to be fast. So, you know, as peer coaches, we're really looking for engagement. And, oh my goodness. Everyone, from every one of those, there was a great deal of engagement. Think about the culture of learning that Kelly has brought into her room, you know, just through that read-aloud that they had worked through. And now, they put it into a whole new realm. That was fascinating. And then getting the kids to be leaders, the teacher turns away and becomes that facilitator. And then she asked them to be self-reflective. And when they talked about the importance of working together, communicating with our partners, that's what we'll do the next time. It was fascinating, lots of fun to watch.
And you know, the book, The Wild Robot, is part of what they call the global read-aloud. And so, students from all over the world are reading that book. So they've had some conversations sniping with kids from other countries as well. Do we have time for me to try and see if that...
Sure.
Because it's a very short video, but it is really cute. I don't, I don't know why it didn't... See if it opens up here, if I do it this way maybe? I don't know. No, doesn't look like it will.
It's a fan, it says remote.
Yeah. Is it on the desktop?
This is breakout box. There are lots of locks to find the combination to.
For global read-aloud, we read about The Wild Robot by Peter Brown. The story was about a wild robot who got stranded on an island because his boat crashed.
Mrs. Duncan led us into another room, and there was debris scattered all over the floor.
Mrs. Duncan told us we were so busy in a book, The Wild Robot, that our boat crashed, and we were stranded on a deserted island like the robot was.
Luckily, everything we needed to be rescued was in the breakout box.
We had 45 minutes to open the box before the tide came in and washed out all the debris on the shore.
We had to use our best thinking skills.
Work together.
And pay attention to everything around us.
We used an iPad to scan a UOL code, a UOL code to get to a website.
A website that gave us clues when we read a story on it that helped us solve a combination of one of the locks.
We found a map, direction, and locations to get the combination for the directional lock.
We found some robot pieces, and we didn't know what they meant until we found a UV pen. We flipped the pieces over, and we shined the UV light on the back of the pieces. And then, we solved the math equations.
There's a lot of other puzzles, too. If we got really stuck, we could use the hint card.
We found a key and used, and we opened up one of the locks.
It was fun. Everyone was working together, but sometimes it was hard. And so, we got a little bit frustrated at each other.
We had to cooperate and work together, and we broke out with only five seconds left.
It was awesome. I wish it never ended.
Our class was separated into two different teams. And my team worked really hard to unlock all the locks.
My team worked, cooperated, and worked hard. We had lots of fun.
We broke out.
We broke out!
Well, thank you, Julie, for that presentation. And I know, I'm gonna come to you. And thank you, Lynn. Would any members like to talk? Karen's ready.
I was just asking, do the teacher have to make up the clues? Or do they come with the kit?
Well, if you wanted to go along with what you're teaching, you have to do, so Kelly made up a lot of the clues to go with.
Wow, that's a lot of work. I'm just glad I'm past third grade.
Anyone else have a question or a comment?
How much is a box?
I can't even tell you.
Okay. I think the idea is genius. It's very similar to the escape rooms, that I couldn't escape, so that's what I'm saying. Love it.
It looks like a lot of fun, but a lot of perseverance, too, on their part.
Absolutely.
Thank you to Tefla.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, well, moving right along, we'll go to positive happenings by our members. Jeff, would you like to go first?
Sure. Rather slow month, and things I attended, except for a couple of community conversations that went very well. We learned a lot of great information from the members of the community. And certainly enjoyed sitting to the left of Member Morehead on a couple of occasions.
As will he should.
Thank you, Jeff. Anything else?
That's all I got.
All right.
Kind of same for me, slow month, a lot of time at home with the new baby. So that's about it.
Do you want to go, Joe?
Yep. I was present at the Columbus Community Conversations, as well as the Wyoming. Loved it, loved meeting with the community and just hearing what they had to say. I also went to the Columbus 5th Grade Concert. That was excellent. And I attended the 916 Gala in Shoreview. And that was also wonderful.
I again concentrated on the community conversations and was, as Jeff said, very excited to see that I was wrong in saying that no one would show up. Because we had a lot of people show up with some very good comments, a lot of direction for us. And I think a lot of new people to help us pass. I think there was a lot, thanks to Steve and Dr. Martini, Mr. Martini. They're going to have a better understanding, and will be able to transmit that to their neighbors and friends. And we did see from the survey that that's one of the best ways they get information. So I think, because we had maybe 200 all told.
Close to.
When that goes out into the community and spreads around, I think we're gonna have a lot more positive help in the next time, next try.
Well, I want to echo what everybody said. I think the community conversations were really fantastic. We had great feedback, excellent turnout. I was at Lino's and Scandia. So, great to see so many people and great questions. I also went to the varsity basketball game for Parents' Night. So it was fun to talk to parents that night. I was out at Lino for I Love to Read. I think Karen did that, too.
They tried, they filled up with spots before I could get in.
Such good students.
Next time.
It was so fun. And I just wanted to mention that the DECA State competition is this weekend. So I know there's a lot of students that made it to state. So they'll be going to Minneapolis for that. And then, this week, I also went to MSBA's Officer Training. So that concludes my report. Now, we'll go to regular board reports. Do you want to start with communications, Jill?
I will.
Member Olson?
Let's see, we saw some of the new marketing materials that are being spread around. Ross talked about a workshop he held with state legislators and local media. And Cory talked about the community catalog and a media kit that they are doing for advertisements in the catalog. And that is coming soon. And that concludes my report.
Okay, Equity Alliance, Member Morehead?
Yes, we had a busy time. We got in commitments from Forest Lake, Inver Grove Heights, South St. Paul, and Stillwater. And we also received a membership form from White Bear Lake Area Schools and Roseville.
Ooh, that's good.
Although some of the districts, Forest Lake being one of them, had to withdraw some of the programs we were able to be in because of finances. They were still able to maintain a better balance than they thought they would, so that is good. And we're gonna be pretty busy. It's going to be my fourth time there to pick a new executive director. Jean is going to be retiring in a year. And so, we'll be working on that. Other than that, that's what we're busy with.
All right, thank you for that report. On Policy Committee, under Old Business, we went over use of student records, Policy 505, and harassment and violence, Policy 425. Staff welfare, Julie Corcoran. Member Corcoran's absent. We'll get that next. I'm sorry, dear.
What a problem.
Did I? I did. Member Olson, we'll go back to her for 916's report.
We talked, they discussed their legislative platform with their lobbyist Valerie Dosland. They gave us a Quora construction update, which is their new school in Woodbury. And we got a technology update. I believe the 916 Gala was a fundraiser for technology in the schools. And they recognized several people who are retiring this year.
Thank you for that report. Finance, Member Odegaard?
Yeah, we looked at the fiscal year '18 budget status, expense run rates tracking compared to prior years, just as it has been, kind of since the start of the school year. Talked about the budget adjustment that is 9.3 on our agenda tonight. And then, Dr. Masti and Director Martini And then, Dr. Massey and Director Martini talked a lot about the efforts down at the Capitol with our legislative agenda, and all the moving pieces that are going into that, to really kind of push for more funding during the session. And that was it.
Thank you for that report. City of Forest Lake, Member Morehead?
Yes, I was able to attend the very lengthy meeting last time, and over 100 people spoke in favor of the new medical, mental health facility that is wanting to locate in Forest Lake and would be a gem for us to get. They, on the other hand, though, needed more information, more this, more that, and so, the best we could hope for at the end of that night was it was put on hold while they get some more information and go back to planning. The people that spoke, the community people that were there, the gentleman that owns the land that has the horse farm, is so excited to have that facility next, so that the young people who are experiencing really tough problems mentally, would be able to use his barn and his horses. So, you know, I'm just one person, but I did talk to Brenda Casilius, the Education Commissioner. She had called me and said she couldn't make it, but please give her urging them to change the zoning so that this facility can be built, and how important it is. There are no beds available for these kids. We had one woman speak from Forest Lake, and I don't know if it was probably in the paper, but her daughter has some serious problems that they couldn't take care of anymore at home, and she needed a bed where professionals could help her. No beds, so she ended up at Lino Lakes, the prison thing. And she just, you know, tears. She said, "My daughter is not a delinquent, you know, she just needs help." But that's how serious it is, that we're running out of beds for these kids. So, again, if anyone, my request is if anyone would like to take time to call their city council members, I know Sam is here, he was in favor of it, so you can save yourself a phone call, but they need a little urging that this is not only good for those students or those kids, number one, that's most important, but it'd be really great for Forest Lake to have that facility and those high-paying jobs and the type of people that would come here to visit. So, you know, it was a long night, didn't end up till 11:15 in the evening, and I just urge everybody to work with the city council and get them to understand that this is a great thing for Forest Lake. And if we don't hurry, I'm afraid they're going, other cities are asking for it and wanting it. It's a real plum to get it. So, if anyone has time to encourage them to allow it to be built here, it would be great.
Well, thank you for that report. Buildings and Grounds, Member Peterson?
Larry reported on the bond sales. We also had a report on Columbus Elementary's punch list. We also got a report on the potential development near Lino Lakes Elementary. And then, we had the long-term facilities report, and then Bill gave a report on some ongoing maintenance issues. And I don't go into great detail, because Larry's going to give us a great report.
Okay, there's your segue, Larry.
Thank you very much.
Director Martini reshaping our table.
It's really exciting to be in front of you again. If you recall, we actually had folks from Martin Pevzner and KOMA, last meeting, sharing the timelines and planning for Scandia, Linwood, and things of that nature. So, I thought it was really exciting that you got to see Chad Martin from Martin Pevzner, and also Mark from KOMA. I think that was a real treat. Everybody else, I think, has been in front of you already, the folks from DLR. If you didn't know, Lee Meyer is actually retiring. But he was very successful with all of our projects, and has been with us for quite some time. I think at some future date, we'll probably bring Stacy Childers in front of you. I know Gail is familiar with her from Springstead through the 9/16 work. I don't know if you've had any interactions with Springstead yet at 9/16, but she's a wonderful rep as well. Patty has moved to another department within Springstead, so things are constantly changing while we're in this five-year process. We decided to make Mike a little bit busier, because very soon, the Southwest meetings will crank up, and very soon, the Scandia, well, the Scandia meetings are already occurring, but the Linwood meetings will crank up as well. Now, this is actually an old picture of the flex space in the high school, and now it's furnished, so that's pretty exciting. Now, as they work their way on the west end of the building, you can see some of the wide-open spaces, and I should come back to that one. That's actually the windows for the new flex space that will be off on this west end. But it's an expansive area that is now actually getting sheet rock, and so, all of those classrooms will have hard walls instead of the demountable walls that you previously saw. Now, we got a chance to get up in the air, and you'll notice that all the brick works on the new schoolhouse off to the left, the new gymnasium is off to the right. And if you were able to zoom in on this picture, off in the distance, you'd see the air-handling penthouses for the original three houses of Century as it was originally built. And of course, I've got this titled Forest Lake Area Middle School. That's pretty exciting. So, a little closer shot of the gymnasium. I believe that some of the staff will be able to tour at their next workday. JP had just scheduled an opportunity for Southwest and Century staff to look at the new classroom house, as well as the gymnasium. So this was kind of a before picture for the brickwork, and all the brickwork is now all around, all sides, and it's a lovely match. It's really pretty neat to see. Moving on down to Lino Lakes. We were able to get some close-up pictures today of the front of the building. So off to the left is the main entrance, and just to the left of that, that will have all of that sage glass that will operate like those sunglasses and eyeglasses that tint as the sun begins to beat directly on it. Inside of those spaces, here's a shot of some office improvements, and then that main gathering area right behind that sage glass is located here as well. Now, we don't have any further activity at Scandia, but that's going to commence fast and furiously this spring break. And Linwood will probably be able to do some abatements on spring break. Staff won't necessarily notice it, but we'll get deep and heavy into this summer. And of course, Linwood, as you see in this scheduling, that's Phase 1, and we'll have Phase 2 in the summer of 2019. I'm excited for March 20th, because we'll be here in this room, opening bids for Southwest. I'm sorry, March 20th, yes. And then, we're going to take bids for Wyoming Fall of 2018. With that, I can answer any questions you might have, or any comments?
I have one question. After Southwest and Wyoming, bids are opened. Is that it for bids?
So, we still have a project to do some sort of demolition work over at the Central Learning Center, but I would doubt that that would take place until very late in 2019. It could be at some point in 2020. We still have some field work here and there, so it's likely I'll be bringing a maintenance package for Forest Lake Elementary's parking lot in front of you. We'd have bids for that. We might have some other indoor air quality projects, or retrofit for lighting, LED, that type of thing, in areas that we hadn't touched yet. So, I think the answer is no. We'll continue improvements wherever, you know, long-term facilities maintenance revenue allows, and if our needs change.
I was just trying to figure out when I could get the green light, email all of those clowns that were against the PLA, and say, "Well, we proved you wrong," so.
You know, we're so far into this project, we're excited, and our results are fantastic, because all of our base bids have been under budget, and these folks have absolutely performed on time, and beaten it in some cases. We've been more than pleased with the project labor agreement.
I've certainly shared that as many times as I can, both to them personally and to the community at large, that not only just who they were, but the work that they've done and the heart they put into this project, and the amazing job that our staff has done working with them. So, it's just, I'm anxious, like you say, I'm anxious for it to be done and be able to just really tell the story.
Are there any other questions or comments for Director Martini?
Keep up the good work.
Thanks for sharing.
Thank you, Larry. Next is our superintendent's report, Dr. Massey.
Thank you very much. Julie Greiman and Lynn Fernstall had to leave, but Lynn Fernstall, as you heard tonight, is one of our coaches. She does amazing work, as you can see, at Scandia and elsewhere, and certainly should be commended for her work. Julie Greiman is the consummate instructional leader. She knows her kids and her staff, creates an incredible environment, and she is knee-deep with moving people into the media center, moving classrooms, getting ready for construction starting over spring break, so she has a lot on her plate, and she should be commended as well. School safety and security is a top priority for the school district, as you know, and as it should be. We are very grateful for the investment being made by the community through the successful 2015 bond referendum. This investment is enabling the school district to add security, secure entry systems to every school. As a result, all doors to the schools are locked once students arrive, and the only access point to the school is through the secure entry system, where visitors must get buzzed into the school. We're also very fortunate to have three school resource officers serving our secondary schools. Not only do they provide important security for our students and staff, they are building positive relationships with our students on a daily basis. An administrative team, including myself, will be meeting with Captain Greg Weiss and Sergeant Mark Richard, tomorrow, actually, to review our school safety, safety and security plans. It is also imperative during this work that we continue to review our security plans, make necessary adjustments, and provide ongoing training for our staff and students on our established procedures related to school's security situations. At the January School Board Meeting, you approved a three-step post-referendum review process. This plan included a post-election survey, community conversations, and a school funding task force. The results of the survey were reported at the February 8th School Board Meeting. And earlier this week, as we talked about, as you talked about in your updates, we held our final two community conversations. In total, we had, we held six community conversations in our communities throughout the district. These meetings were held in Linwood, Lino Lakes, Columbus, Wyoming, Scandia, and Forest Lake. In total, we had close to 200 community members attend the discussions. These conversations provided an excellent forum for board members to engage with the community around school finance, the failed November referendum, and the district's ongoing financial challenges. I would like to thank all those who attended one of these events. In fact, we had some people attend more than one. We value their input and ideas, and the information will be very helpful as the board considers next steps. The dates and participants for the school funding task force have been set. The dates for these meetings are March 6th, March 20th, and March 27th. We currently have 20 community members planning to attend, be a part of that task force. Some are regulars, and they know how to get here. The lion's share of that group need directions how to get here, because they're not the regulars that we see at meetings. We're going to get a very diverse and broad set of inputs from this group. I'm really looking forward to the work. The agenda for the task force is to study how schools are funded, discuss the district's funding challenges, and provide guidance for the school board with respect to future operating referendum questions. And lastly, earlier this month, we had a team of secondary teachers and administrators attend a National School of Redesign Conference, actually in San Diego, so it was a good time of year to go there. And I would like to thank Cross Anderson, KOMA, Martin Pevzner, ICS, and DLR for funding that trip in full. So, again, their generous contribution made that conference possible. The team of administrators and teachers are now busy working with the various staff committees as they plan for the transition of all 7th and 8th graders to the middle school, and 9th graders to join the high school starting next year. Through the reshaping opportunities for success bond projects, we have built some very impressive learning spaces for students and staff, and the staff are now busy planning the instructional program for the students who will be attending the middle school and the high school next year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Massey, for that report. Moving on to seven is our consent agenda. Do any members have any items to pull?
Move approval of 7.1 to 7.5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, donations, Member Odegaard?
Yes, we got two pages to go through tonight. $479 from the Forest Lake High School Football Booster Club to the high school football team for payment for Glazier Coaches Clinic membership. $754 from Red Line Club to the high school girls hockey team for partial payment for a coach bus. $37.44 from Your Cause Corporate Employee Giving to Wyoming Elementary for general ed. And $395.20 from Boston Scientific to Wyoming Elementary for general ed. The next 10 donations are all for the January 29th Classified In-Service Day, so I'm just going to say that once or twice. Six, snow tracks from SFM in Bloomington, a winter cap and long-sleeve shirt from Daily Electric in St. Paul, cases of yogurt from Baker Sales Company in Minneapolis valued at $45, one case of, that's got to be a typo, applies?
Apples.
Oh, apples, okay. Maybe apple pies. From Bix Produce in St. Paul to, for, valued at $33. 300 donuts from Affinity Group Food Marketing, valued at $86. $15 subway gift card and two Signal Guard data blocker cards from Legal Shield, valued at $45. An electric toothbrush from Delta Dental, valued at $100. Four water bottles, three blankets from Preferred One. Four $10 Applebee's gift cards from Ameriprise Financial Services in Forest Lake, valued at $40. This is a long one. Two Wild Game tickets, two Twins tickets, three logoed polo shirts, three logoed gray caps, a 46-inch umbrella, 17-ounce stainless steel bottle, blue folding chair and bag, True Timber pooler bag, five 3M logo ball caps, three 3M Command brand hooks, $25 Holiday Station gift card, two MNUCF soccer tickets, and two $25 gift cards from Delco in New Brighton. And again, all 10 of those were for the January 29th Classified In-Service Day. A Yamaha 76 keyboard from Anita Messel in Plymouth and Holly Oberhalzer in Wyoming, to Southwest Junior High Jazz Band for student use, valued at $100. $300 from Faith Lutheran Church in Forest Lake, to Forest Lake Area Schools Family Support to help a district family with housing costs. And another $300 from Forest Hills United Methodist Church in Forest Lake, to Forest Lake Area Schools Family Support to help district family with housing costs. In total, that was $2,714.64, plus several in-kind donations. And with that, I move approval of all of those donations.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Donations carry. Thanks, you, thank you, Member Odegaard.
And Chair, if I could just thank him for adding them up and giving the total, I appreciate that.
Steve gave me the total, so thanks, Steve. I forgot to do it this time, but.
Well, appreciate it. I think it's pretty amazing for the folks to hear every month how much extra people are going.
Oh, it's so generous, every month, month after month. We're so lucky. Okay, moving on to Old Business, 9.1, approve Use of Student Records Policy 505.
And this policy was presented at the last meeting and is up for approval tonight. There's only one notable change to this policy, and that is the addition of email address as identified as directory information, student directory information. And with that, I would recommend approval.
Move to approve 9/1. Is there a second?
Second.
Do we take a roll call?
Any discussion?
Okay, is any discussion?
Just wanted to, I brought this up, I think, last time, that we want to be very, very sure that the proper information gets to folks, that they do not have to have their information listed if they don't want it.
And that'll be in the summer communication, district communication, and of course, we'll make that quite evident to folks. Why do this include it in directory information?
Thank you.
All right, Member Clerk, could you please take a roll call?
Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
And Member Olson votes aye.
Motion carries. 9.2, approve harassment and violence policy 425.
And this policy has also been reviewed by the School Board Policy Committee, and is up for approval tonight. There are no changes recommended by the Policy Committee, and I recommend approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Would any member like to discuss? All right. Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye, and Member Morehead?
Aye.
9.3, approve 2017-18 budget adjustments. Director Martini?
Madam Chair, and members of the School Board, we look at the revenue and expenditure budgets each month. As Member Odegaard mentioned, the Finance Committee has reviewed the corresponding budget adjustment that you'll find on page two, and recommends that. If you look into the second page of this item, we're going to be reducing state aids by $500,000, increasing property taxes by $1.6 million. That's primarily long-term facilities maintenance revenue. So we've got students that we need to take down a little, and long-term facility maintenance revenue recognition that's coming a little earlier than planned. On the expenditure side, or uses side, we'll have $800,000 placed into the LTFM expenditure budget. So that's going to result in a $300,000 improvement to the general fund projected balance for this year-end, which will actually bring it above $2 million. So, we're excited about that. We ask for your approval, but I can answer any questions.
Is there a motion to approve, 9.3?
So moved. Second.
Discussion from any members?
Good news.
Anyone else, any other members? Okay, thank you, Director Martini.
Thank you. We're going to vote on it.
Good idea, Luke. Thank you. Member Clerk, please take a roll call.
Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye. Member Morehead?
Aye.
And Member Peterson?
Aye.
Allies.
Motion carries. 9.4, recommend award to Scandia Elementary Espaço Subatement Bid. 9.4, recommend award to Scandia Elementary asbestos abatement bid. Director Martini?
Madam Chair and members of the board, this is to remove asbestos from the construction areas within Scandia Elementary. We opened bids at 2:00 on February 5th. Six bid packages were actually sent out. Five of those contractors responded, and we ask that you award the bid to Echo Midwest for a grand total of $116,200.
Is there a motion to approve 9.4?
So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Member Peterson. Any discussion from any members?
Have we worked with them before? I was just going to ask that.
We have not, but Field Environmental has, and they're very comfortable with all of the contractors that did bid this project.
That's good, yeah. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Member Clerk, take a roll call, please.
Member Tyson?
Aye.
Member Olson votes aye, Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
And Member Odegaard?
Aye.
Moving on to 9.5, ratified 2017-2019 Forestlake Education Association Employment Agreement.
All right, I will walk through the notable changes in the contract. And first, before I do that, I'd like to thank Allison Whitliff and her comments earlier, and your whole entire negotiation team. I would concur, we, we had some very candid conversation and settled on some, I think, important changes. But it was a productive conversation throughout, and the recognition that we don't have a lot of resources to work with, and an understanding on both sides of that. And I would first start with the most significant part, and that is that the financial components of the contract are within the parameters that were set by the board. So on the salary schedule, we are right on the parameters that were provided by the board. And the other changes are a few language changes, and I'll walk you through those notable changes. The first change would be on page six of the contract related to the teacher workday. There are workdays throughout the school year, and they typically are aligned with the start of the school year, providing teacher, time for teachers to prep for the start of the year, and as well at the end of grading periods, whether that's at the end of the quarter or at the end of the semester. And those days are solely dedicated to teacher time to do grades, grade papers, enter grades in grade book, prepare grades for report cards, as well as prep for classes starting the next term. So we created language that is time-bound to this contract and allows teachers to complete that work at their, at their discretion in a location that works for them. They don't necessarily have to come in and close their classroom door and do the work there. They do this work with their teammates in places other than school. As long as the work gets done, we're good to go. So we, teachers are given some latitude as to where they do that work. That is clearly dedicated to workdays. It's not intended to be anything but a full workday, but loosening the confines where that work needs to be done.
Dr. Massey, may I ask a question on that one?
Yes.
We did put that time on it, that, would it be reevaluated the next contract?
It'll be evaluated throughout, and it will be renegotiated, renegotiated at the end of this contract and with the next contract.
We certainly know that our teachers are professionals, and it will be fine, but we just want to make sure that we have something to go back and look at.
I'm confident that our teachers and their professionalism will get the work done, but at the same time, there's an opportunity to reevaluate on both sides.
Yeah, as I say, it might not work for them too, so that's good we've got that in there.
The next change is on page 12 of the contract and relates to compensation for deans and coordinators. Presently, there is a $2,500 stipend in both, for both deans and coordinators for additional responsibilities that they're, that they take on. In the case of dean supervision, in the case of coordinators, additional responsibilities assigned to them. And then there's also a component of $3,500 performance evaluation piece for both the deans and the coordinators. And this is not a cost item, but it rolls the $2,500 and $3,500 into a $6,000 stipend paid out for both deans and coordinators. The other change is on page 15, related to health benefits for part-time employees. We currently have one tier of benefits, well, two tiers, I guess. If you're not a full-time 1.0 FTE teacher, anything short of full-time 1.0, those teachers would get a .5 benefit package, regardless of the FTE that they work, provided they work over $600. We added a second tier at a .75 FTE, so a teacher working .75 FTE to a .99 FTE, they would be eligible for a .75 benefit package. So we created a second tier, and that applies to five teachers, four or five teachers would get that benefit. The other change item would be on page 28, related to 403Bs. The language change there is to modify the lifetime matching, district matching contribution from $40,000 to $50,000 lifetime cap. That does not apply to any teacher in this, this contract. There are a number of teachers that are approaching that cap. They're also approaching the age of retirement or rule of 90, but it does raise that cap so that, that benefit would continue. The other change is related to the steps and pay, pay schedule for ECFE teachers, and there is a 2% increase to that scale, which creates a, a parallel adjustment to the teacher salary schedule. And the last item to note is on page 38, and that is related to the professional development work. Currently, there are two and a half building professional days. There are also a number of district professional development days. This language applies to the building professional development days. Building professional development time is determined by a site development, professional development team comprised of the principal and teachers. The agenda for that day is determined by that group, and we agreed that there would be two hours on two of those building development days, where teachers would define their own professional development based on their own professional development needs, whether that's reading journals, articles, studying student work, and looking at their own student data, maybe collaborating with other teachers, but it would be two hours that they could define their own professional development time versus that time being solely determined by a staff development team. And those are the notable changes throughout the contract.
Thank you, Dr. Massey. Is there a motion to approve 9.5?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from members?
Again, it's wonderful to see that everyone understands our financial development and, and wanted to work within the parameters. We appreciate that. And I'm just looking at the last one. Is that a unique thing to this district now, letting them use two hours instead of having them sit there in eight hours and maybe not even have that as good a time spent for them? Do other districts do that, or is that unique?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure it is, I don't know how commonplace, but that won't be unique to Forestlake. In fact, the last number of years when I was at the high school, we built that into a number of those days because it just made sense.
It just makes sense.
Teachers have journals.
It scares me, making common sense. That's good.
Yeah, a lot of stuff piles up on your desk you don't have time to get to, and this creates some time for teachers to get to some of that professional development work.
Any other members have discussion? Member Odegaard?
I'll say my piece. I know it's no secret that I won't be supporting this contract tonight. It's another $1 million that we don't have to spend over the next two years. Wish it wasn't the case. I wish we had the money, but we don't, and that just means more cuts coming in a month. So, you know, it, it's, it's a hard pill to swallow, but, I mean, anyone that's taken a microeconomics class in high school or college, you know, Ellison talked about being able to retain teachers. Yeah, that would be great, but that's not the reality that we live in. So supply and demand, you know, I, I get that our salary schedule's not up to snuff compared to others, but, you know, we all know our funding struggles with the state, and then most communities supplement that with local levies, and our community has chosen not to support that route. So I won't, won't be supporting the contract this evening.
Thank you. Any other members have discussion or comments?
Well, I'd just like to thank our, our flea group and our teachers. I think that they're a very understanding and patient group. I like the pieces that they added. Creates that autonomy and professionalism. I think companies, private sector, public are moving to, in the direction of, you know, working at home. You can get up and get started instead of commuting or driving. You can do your work at home. I think that's getting to be more common. I just like how it is that Professional Development Day has that individualness about it. I think that's important. So, Member Peterson?
Yeah, I'd just like to say one thing. You know, I, I was pondering this as I was sitting here, whether I was going to comment or not. And after Member Odegaard's statement, I thought I'd make one of my own, and that is, I really appreciate the teachers' willingness to understand and appreciate where we're at financially. I think, given the current economy and the current demand for teachers, they certainly could have demanded far more and left us in a very tough predicament, which several other districts have gone through in recent past. And so I appreciate their understanding of where we're at financially and being reasonable in negotiations and working collaboratively to a solution that can, can work for everybody involved, so. And I will be supporting the teachers' contract.
Thank you. Member Peterson, any other members? Okay. Member Clerk, can you take a roll call, please?
Member Olson votes aye, Member Morehead?
Aye.
Member Peterson?
Aye.
Member Odegaard?
No.
And Member Tyson?
Aye.
Moving on to 10, new business. 10-1, first reading of the 2018-19 school calendar adjustment.
Yeah, this, this item is necessary because the school calendar is established by the school board, and we're referencing the 18-19 school calendar that's already been approved by the school board. The change that we're seeking here, and this is a first reading, so it does not require action, is to adjust the first day of school next school year for 11th and 12th graders. The idea is that 9th and 10th graders would report on the first day of school along with K-8. So it would just be 11th and 12th graders that we would delay a day. Allowing the first day of school to be dedicated to orientation, introduction, programming, introduction, as I said, to the high school system, so we can create a high school environment where packed a number of kids in it, where kids go through various orientation exercises and create familiarity and a comfort with the high school change. I say 9th and 10th graders because, as you know, 9th graders will be new to the high school along with the 10th graders. So it gives a day for a less intensive environment, if you will, for 9th and 10th graders to become acclimated to and familiar with the high school. And then, and they'll walk through their regular schedule, they'll be introduced to their courses and their teachers. And then, then obviously, the next day, the September 5th, we'll have all four grades there underway for the school year.
I love that idea, and I think going forward, we should make it an annual thing for the 9th graders. It's very intimidating going to a new school, getting lost, where are my classes? And I think that's going to be beneficial to all grades.
This is not new, this would not be a, a new concept, or this is modeled off of, what some other districts are doing.
Yep. Member Morehead, did you have a comment?
No, I just agree with it.
Okay, any other comments from members?
I'd just like to add that I talked to two colleagues that do this already in their district, and they had nothing but good things to say, that it just gets that first day off to, that, that whole grade level off to a great start.
Okay, moving on to 10.2, first reading of, to discontinue policy 616.
This policy was written to meet the requirements of No Child Left Behind Act that is now obsolete, and the Ever Student Succeed Act is, is the new federal guidelines for schools. So the language in this contract is really related to old requirements and is now obsolete. And these, the requirements in this contract and the next two, or not contracts, but policies, and the next two policies, actually, are covered under policy 613 and 614. So the, this policy is obsolete, and we'll be recommending a discontinuance of this policy, and this is the first reading.
Okay, moving on to 10.3. It's the first reading of discontinuance policy 617, school district assurance of preparatory and high school standards.
And similar to policy 616, this policy 617 is now obsolete, and most of the requirements identified here are covered under policy 613 and 614.
Okay, moving on to 10.4, first reading, discontinue policy 618, assessment of standard achievement.
And the same is the case here. These requirements are now obsolete and met the definitions of the No Child Left Behind Act, and we're recommending a discontinuance of this policy as well.
Okay. On to 11, review upcoming calendar dates at the bottom for all board members. And then, moving on to 12, our regular meeting will recess and go into closed session to discuss negotiation strategy for principals, supervisors, and directors. This meeting is adjourned.
Take five minutes.
Five-minute break.